All this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today, June 27, 2019. It is 7:01 PM. We are meeting in the MLV Elementary School Library. Start with a call for order. Marty?
All right, Marty King.
Tom McGinn.
Jamie Lau.
Andrew Moore.
Susan Roth.
George Canon.
Oh, great.
Corinne. The town planner is out of town today attending a funeral, so please bear with me. We have approval of the agenda, public comments, approval of minutes for June 20. We have a new application for Pitchfork subdivision and an application from American Iron and Metal. There are two pending applications, B&amp;B Trucking and Plenary Site Plan Review, and Oakwood Terrace, which is a major preliminary subdivision application. There is an amendment to this subdivision. Joyful Noise Daycare Center has requested an amendment, and we'll be discussing that. There'll be other business, and then we'll all go home because we have no planner's report tonight. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Yay. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, we have public comment. If there is anything on the agenda that is not on the agenda, that members of the public would like to comment on or ask us to pursue changes to, or, well, pretty much anything you want to ask us about what we do. Now is the time that you would do that. Seeing nobody put their hands up and want to say anything, we'll move right on to the next section. Approval of the Minutes for June 20, 2019.
I don't have those.
You know, we will table that until the next meeting because we don't have. New application, item number one, Pitchfork subdivision. It's an amendment to a major subdivision pre-planned, pre-application. A proposal to amendment to an approved subdivision of multifamily units, where the applicant proposes to subdivide off a net two-acre parcel in lieu of constructing, and approves duplex located at 132 Lock Haven Road, Tax Map 38, Lot 18A in the R3 District. Barry Pitchfork is the applicant's and owner. Stephen Dow, RLS of Sebago Technics, is the applicant's agent. Mr. Dow.
Mr. Doe.
Mr. Doe, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Where would you like me to?
I... You don't have an easel, do you?
I do not have an easel.
Well, maybe Paul would.
I think we should just put into the order selection to buy us an easel.
Did y'all see this up here?
Here's Godboy coming.
Get away from the house.
Wonderful moment.
This is what you call a shared moment. Here's an engineer that knows what he's doing. Is that a shared moment?
Yes, sir.
Okay for you.
So my name's Steve Doe from Sebago Technics, a landscape architect here on behalf of Barry Pitchfork. This is an approved project where they have put in a... It was a multifamily development. They put in four buildings in here. His house is here, and then there was an approved duplex out here in the front. Since then, his son is looking to, would like to put a house out there. So instead of placing a house here, his preference is to put a house back in here, the back part of the property. So I was talking with Tad and working through some of the ideas on this. So the idea is to create a two-acre net lot on the property, which would accommodate for the single-family residents. This duplex would not be built. Instead, they put a house in this location, a septic there, and then this green area would be the two-acre lot. The duplex or the multiplex here would have all of this land with a strip that comes back to the common land back here. And then there'd also be an access, kind of a 25-foot section here for more access to that open space. That's essentially it. It's a pretty simple request. We're here for pre-application and looking for any comments we can have. One other thing, the access. The access would come off the existing road and then come through Barry's lot to access the house here. Frontage would be on the Pitchfork Drive. We're using the back lot provisions with the 50-foot frontage for that.
So let me see if I understand this completely. I'd be surprised. When you look at where the access is going to come, that is going to be on the edge of the property, or that is going to cross over?
So in the... Right now, is it off to all one property? That's the way it is right now?
Yes, this is all one property. Barry's is his own lot.
Oh, okay. All right, so that won't accept. So you're... Right, so really it's splitting it into... From one to two. I thought it was one to three, but it's just two.
So Barry's going to grant a permanent easement right of way? Now, when I look at the plan, that red dot says proposed hy... Proposed site house, but it says dry hydrant.
Well, there's a...
It says probably.
Yeah.
That.
Oh, okay.
There is a hydrant there.
There's a fire pond over here, so there's a hydrant up in there.
How is that access? How would a fire truck get back to that?
It's a... They have their own parking section there. It's turned into my driveway, and the hydrant is right there.
Okay. I couldn't tell from looking at this as to how the... A fire truck would get back there.
No, there's quite a good bit of room.
Okay.
What's the width of the road or whatever else? Because I remember years ago, when you came for this, I don't know if anything has changed since then to the present. The width of the road, I'm just saying, I'm just thinking of old and new.
Yeah. It has nothing changed.
No, I'm just saying, back then, to compare what it is today, if it's the same or not, that's what I'm at a question of. I don't know with somebody we have.
Yeah, what is the width of that driveway?
I'm going to say it's probably 20 feet, the driveway. There's a 30-foot dimension on there from the edge of the travelway to the right-of-way line. And just looking at that, it's probably 20.
You have, you know, 20, but it's not a problem.
What's going to go on the property where the duplex was going to go, if any?
Nothing. Yeah. This has kind of taken that... The density that just gave them is being used for the house.
And where the duplex was going to be is going to become part of the multifamily that is down there?
It'll be their... It's their property, but there won't be a structure there.
Okay.
So Steve, why don't we prove the net density of the... Just the approved and what you're looking at. I guess it has... It's based on the number of bedrooms that's allowed?
I believe that's the way it was.
So effectively, it looks like the duplex that never was built had a total of three bedrooms approved for it, so they're essentially being transferred to the house lot?
Correct.
One question I have is Steve, with the density, would you be creating a new lot for the four unit apartment building? What's the... That'll be on a new lot. I'm curious what the density in that lot might be.
On this new lot?
On the new... Out front, the one out front, the apartment building is.
The four units, you mean?
The four units, yeah. This is... Is this a two-acre zone?
Two-acre zone, yeah, net acre.
Does that mean with four units, it's already there? That four unit is already there. I know, but it's part of the larger property.
Yeah, but it was based on... And I'm not sure how the original was based on it. It was based on bedrooms, where it was approved for three bedrooms. We're not changing the density based on the bedrooms.
We take them... The density that was spread out over, I don't know, how many acres, or what? How many?
The original size of this property is how much, do you know?
Was it 11?
Oh, 12 acres.
Was it 12?
Yes.
About 12.
Which is how you were able to get the six units in there? Because it's two acres per unit.
So you have that spread out over 12 acres, and it worked. Now you're creating a new lot that is going to be...
But I'm only taking two.
I'm looking at the four that already exist.
Right.
And you're creating a lot that would have higher density than would be allowed if it was a new property, which in fact, this would become a new easement lot.
This is still only a two-acre net lot. So it's still only like one.
So I think what Tom's concerned is that what would become the lot that has the fourplex on it?
Yep.
If you were to look at the density on that, just that piece?
Yep.
So I think that's ultimately something we'll have to review with Ted.
Okay.
On how that... I mean, my opinion is.
I agree. I'm thinking to myself, though, if originally this was a 12-acre lot, which includes all of the green space that is up there, plus all of the front space?
All of that.
That it should...
Should work out.
It should work out because you're only going to have five units instead of the six.
And I'm only taking two acres of the net out of that.
Yep. So from my looking at it, I think that that would qualify. But again, to Jamie's point, we need to clarify it with the town planner.
Well, let me ask you this. Does the... What's noted is the common area. It looks like you've got a 50-foot strip there along this property.
Yeah, 25 there.
So would this... Would the lot with the multiplex include this common area in the back?
Yeah.
So technically, you know...
It's all connected.
It's all sort of...
Yep.
So that might be how they would sit around. So it's not just this piece here?
Right.
It's this piece and that piece, because technically that would be all the same lot.
This is all up essentially in the back. Yeah, I did run that by... I was concerned about the width of that, and I ran it by Tad. I believe you ran it by the code officer too, to make sure that that was sufficient for a connector.
So technically, if you sometime down the road, since you didn't build the duplex here, you could build it back there if you wanted to? Or that's going to remain?
Undeveloped.
Undeveloped.
Yeah. So it's just... We're just kind of switching, flopping from building the duplex to just building the single-family house.
We need to do a sidewalk job. And that would be the next meeting, which is the 11th of July or the 10th of July? 11th, because I'm leaving on the 17th, so it would be on the 10th. No, it would be the 11th, right, the first of Thursday?
No.
Yep.
Yeah, it would be the 11th. It is the 11th.
Yep. Because the fourth is next Thursday.
Right.
Okay. I always think of the fourth as on Thursday, that's what it is.
We need a motion at a time.
Make a motion. We have a sidewalk on July 11.
Second, yeah?
6:00 AM, yeah.
6:00 AM, okay. Motion's been made.
Weather committed.
Weather committed. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Did you get it all? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you if you could stake out where the property's going to be.
Okay.
As a coming handy. Give us a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. American Iron and Metal Major Conditional Use Application: A Determination of Completeness. It's an application for renewal of an expired conditional use permit for 43,000 square foot solid waste disposal facility and metal recycling yard located on a 22.9-acre parcel located at 2244 Portland Road, Tax Map 12, Lot 9, in the BI District. American Iron and Metal is the owner and applicant, and CES is the applicant's agent. Is the applicant's agent here? Is anybody from the applicant here? We're going to table it. It's going to get tabled for the next meeting.
I knew that. I mean, it didn't seem like Drew was planning on coming.
Nope, nope, he was just the other.
Did he indicate if anybody?
He was the caretaker.
Instead of outright doing it to the next meeting right now, can we move it to the end of the agenda in case for some reason somebody shows up?
Yeah, we can do that. So we'll move it to the end, and if somebody shows up, we'll be in good shape. And if they don't show up, we'll table it to the next meeting. Pending applications, B&amp;B Trucking, Plenary Site Plan Review, A Proposal to Construct a Truck Repair Facility with Associated Parking and Support Facilities on a 2.04-acre parcel of land. Tax Map 4, Lot 13, at 232 New Road in the Alfred Road Business District. Robert Maskell is the owner applicant, and Paul Gadboy, PE, is the applicant's agent. And I can assume that since you put all of that up there, you want to tell us something new?
Well, yeah, I know Tad. Tad didn't like my red maples along the old mountain road. He thought they weren't salt tolerant. So we changed it. Don't ask me if they are, but they're beautiful looking trees, too. They're tree-tuning calvert, cat short tree, and they're green leaf that turned red, that turned orange and maple. Kind of a nice-looking tree. It's more salt tolerant, so Tad felt that was a better tree. Tad also wanted me... Sorry, Paul, I had to put it on silence. And I wanted me to add another tree. We had seven proposed because he thought the site distance from the house and the existing green vegetation added, and he wanted another tree, so I did that, and that's the only change that I've made to the plan.
Okay. Thank you. As you remember, last week, we had this discussion. We just didn't have the findings of fact for approval. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Right? Is everybody happy? I know you have worked... You've worked... You have worked to turn around to keep situations and everything else. You were coming up with no backbeat. Did you get any more backbeat, or is it everything as it stands? Around the last?
The last plan we had was a public hearing. More things did speak a little on the project. I can't speak fully enough to hear this evening, but it seemed like they were satisfied with the landscape.
Because I knew you were doing due diligence to make them happy, or as best as you could. And it was left up in the air if there was... If they were going to contact or anything else. I mean, I'm just saying, what you're saying, people cried.
That was before the public hearing, right? Then she showed up. She certainly had her ankle sprained.
I mean, you've done everything. I realize that.
We're ready to move on. You guys just...
So is there a fence?
Any more?
No. Still have the fence?
Findings of fact and notice of decision, B&amp;B Trucking. Whereas on April 25, 2019, the Arundel Planning Board received a Plenary Site Plan application from Robert Maskell to reconstruct the truck repair facility with associated parking and support facilities on a 2.04-acre parcel of land, Tax Map 4, Lot 13, located at 232 New Road in the Alfred Road Business District. Whereas the Planning Board conducted a sidewalk on May 23, 2019, whereas on May 30, 2019, the Planning Board deemed the resubmitted application complete and scheduled a public hearing for June 13, 2019. Whereas on June 20, 2019, the Planning Board conducted a public hearing in conformance with Land Use Order in Section 929, and whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, number one, owner of the property is Robert Maskell. Number two, the property is located at 232 New Road, Tax Map 4, Lot 13, in the Alfred Road Business District. Number three, the property formally contained a truck repair facility that was demolished and the area of the parcel reduced to facilitate the main Department of Transportation realignment of the intersection of Old Alfred Road and New Road. The applicant has proposed reconstructing a new 3,625-square-foot repair facility with three bays located in the northern section of the property with a driveway access to Old Alfred Road. Number four, the property also contains an existing single-story, 1,235-square-foot residence that will be retained on the site as a rental. The Department of Transportation will be providing two parking spaces with direct access from New Road to the residence to meet the town parking requirements. The existing onsite septic system has been evaluated and found to be functional. Number five, the new truck repair building will be serviced by two customer passenger car parking spaces located on the northeast side of the building and 14 truck parking spaces located to the south of the facility. An enclosed dumpster will be located in the northwest corner of the truck parking lot to accommodate waste materials. Number six, truck tractor trailers are proposed to be parked longitudinally on the east side of the truck parking lot. No truck rentals shall be operating on the site. Number seven, the truck repair building will be serviced by the onsite well and a new septic system. The HHE 200 for the facility has been submitted to the Planning Board. Number eight, the proposed site development meets all of the dimensional standards of the AR District. Number nine, stormwater drainoff from the new building, parking lots, and other impervious services are graded to stay contained within the paved services and discharged into an existing man-made pool at the southeast corner of the property. The applicant proposes to install a drop inlet control structure to the pond to use the existing freeboard in the pond to accommodate detained rainoff from a 25-year storm. Runoff from the pond retention structure will discharge off-site into an adjacent intermittent stream and wetland area. Drip-edge travel sand bed will recharge runoff from the proposed repair building. The net increase in impervious surface is a negligible 538 square feet. No runoff from the building of the parking lot shall flow toward the adjacent residential wells. Number 10, there will be no lighting of the parking lots except for cutoff wall pack lights mounted over the entrance to each bay, plus a door light at the main entrance to the building located at the northeast corner of the proposed building. Number 11, the applicant proposes to screen the parking lots from adjacent and existing residential structures by a six-foot-high cedar stockade fence. To further soften the appearance of the fence and screen the roof lines of the parked vehicles, the applicant proposes to install a line of seven-plus...
Whatever.
Fancy word here that I have no idea how to say. Green giant arborvitae's on the west side of the fence. In addition, the applicant will install three castor street trees with a Latin name attached along the Old Alfred Road and other foundation plantings. Sorry, Paul, I can't... I have no idea how to say that. Number 12, the applicant has submitted a suitable soil erosion control plan. Number 13, record plans. Sets of improvements include a site plan, soil erosion plan, detailed sheets, and post-development stormwater plan prepared by Paul Gadboy, PE, and dated April 5, 2019, with revisions through to June 26. I have no idea what the series of numbers means, but it's with revisions through to 626, 2019. Conformance with Conditional Use Criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 929 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. 929-1, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. Vehicle repair facilities are permitted uses in the Arundel Road Business District, in the Alfred Road Business District. The use is consistent in scale and use with other uses in the surrounding neighborhood and the district.
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 929-2, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan specifies automobile sales and service facilities to be appropriate in, and the use is consistent with, the long-range plan for the Alfred Road Business District.
Tell them to move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-2. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. 929-3, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed parking layout exceeds the minimum requirements for a truck repair facility as specified in Land Use Ordinance Section 512-4.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-3. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Marty?
Make a note that it turned out it has been determined because of DOT, the safety and everything else.
I don't... I honestly don't think that needs to be part of...
I'm just saying, because it's why it was all done. But the safety of Route 111 turns out at this point is being done because of its DOT. Just a thought.
But that's the reason that the whole application had to come through. But I'm being specific in terms of this criteria. It's not necessary to meet that criteria.
Okay. Then I move.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. 929-4, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The applicant has submitted an HHE 200 design for the proposed new septic system serving the new truck facility and has submitted documentation to the Arundel CEO that the existing septic system is sufficient to meet the demands of the existing residential home.
Tell them to move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-4. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? It is unanimous. 929-5, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, dust, and smoke, the nature of the business does not generate any additional noise, dust, or smoke. Blair, the applicant has provided photometric data verifying that the proposed cutoff lighting fixtures on this building will meet the lighting standards of Land Use Ordinance Section 510.
Tell them to move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-5. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 929-6, that the physical characteristics of the site, including slope, including locations, slopes, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not measurably change the existing topography, slopes, soils, or vegetative cover of the site from the previous use.
Tell them to move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-6. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 929-7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for 929-7. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 929-8, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed facilities.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the Plenary Site Plan Review of Robert Maskell to reconstruct a truck repair facility with associated parking and support facilities on a 2.04-acre parcel of land, Tax Map 4, Lot 13, located at 232 New Road in the Alfred Road Business District, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall not operate a truck rental business or permanently store trailers or parts vehicles on the site without first securing a permit modification from the Arundel Planning Board. Number two, the buffering stockade fence shall be maintained in good working condition for as long as the... Number two, the buffering stockade fence shall be maintained in good working condition for as long as the truck repair facility operates on the site. Similarly, all specified landscaping buffering materials shall be maintained and replaced if plant material dies or is damaged. Number three, prior to the construction, the applicant will submit a surety in conformance with Land Use Ordinance Section ten-seven-two in the amount of site improvements, site improvement sites as determined by the town planner. Number four, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the code enforcement officer receives certification from the design engineer and a written statement from the town planner that all improvements mandated by this permit have been installed in accordance with the record drawings so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twenty-seventh day of June, two thousand nineteen. Need a motion to approve the whole thing.
Yay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval of the findings of fact and notice of decision for B and B Trucking. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Finally.
I'm going to have to have Tad retype the first page. Because for some, for some reason, as you can see here, the dates did not come through. Six twenty-six and then one ninety-five and twelve ninety. So I'm just gonna have to, you're gonna have to have to retype it.
Six twenty-six is correct.
It's correct, right.
Oh, my lounge, paper copies.
Okay.
And then I was told to drop off more.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think we need to, because they reported.
You got, you got another one after this? That was a warm-up?
In accordance with the reported, or submitted by.
He's gonna have to fix this so that we, and submit it so that we can. Oak Ridge Terrace, item number two. Major plenary subdivision application, a proposal to develop a fourteen lot subdivision on sixty-six-point-nine acre parcel identified as tax map seventeen lot fifteen A at the intersection of South Skilling Road and Limerick Road in the R-two and Shoreland Zones. Walter Wood is the property's owner, Jason Lafferty's, I did it again, I know I did.
You could've changed it to Charlie Brown, Jason's not here.
Okay. Is the applicant of records?
Applicant is here.
Well, he's the owner.
He's the owner.
Agenda lists Jason as the applicant.
Oh, no, it, it, it does, yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
For whatever reason.
I'm Jason's underling.
Okay.
Philly. Replacement, Philly. Plan B.
Plan B. So yeah, we're here asking for preliminary plan approval for the subdivision off of Laura Lane. As you said, it's fourteen lot subdivision, it's about a thousand linear feet of road. I think we keep under an acre of impervious and about a acre and a half to develop. We have three different stormwater treatment proposals, there's a two buffers and then infiltration basin. Gens here, if there's any questions about subsurface, each lot will be served by its own well on the subsurface wastewater treatment and underground utilities.
So how did you get in, well, how did you finally resolve?
You're going in off Laura Lane?
You're gonna go in off of Laura Lane.
Right here.
Yes, we actually had a, we met with the neighbors.
Right.
And went back and forth and finally were able to come to an agreement. So we intend we'll be completing Laura Lane as, as moving forward as constructs. Jason did meet with the town engineer prior. And the town engineer Roger is just asking that we do a couple, some test pitting. Every hundred feet or so on the existing Laura Lane could determine that the gravel base is adequate. That an engineer can then certify that as well through that process. And also, he also met with the fire department in reference to the, we're gonna be putting a fifteen thousand gallon, fifteen thousand gallon system for fire protection within the project as well.
Jason had sent to Tad Redway prior to this meeting an email, I don't know whether the board got it or not, but it referenced the meeting that he was talking about with regard to the fire chief.
Okay.
And the fire chief, as I understood, was signed off on the notion of the fifteen thousand gallon tank in approximately the position along the road that Jason would be in deciding.
The, the fire chief will be giving you a letter to that effect?
That's correct.
Okay, and that, and that will be sufficient, that, we'd ask him for it.
Correct.
Correct.
And so, so by, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just to complete sort of the, the pieces to how we got here. The relocated road and the negotiation with the neighbors provided an option that literally has no wetland impact.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, because it looks like you're not.
Correct, so the, the bonus here, the win-win for everybody, including the natural resources, is that we don't need a wetland permit to cross any wetlands at all with the infrastructure.
That's right.
So, so you were able to persuade Dolly that she really wants to let you go out there?
I had to write in that she has proper hunting rights.
Why does that not surprise me?
Animal without human, right?
You're not learning creatures, are you?
Now, you're, you're going to bring the entire road up to town standards or just from the point that you, you enter into the?
The entire road.
The entire road.
So is the, is the intent that Laura Lane would then be offered up for town acceptance?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's why we'll have, you know, Roger, that's why Jason met Roger on site just to, just to discuss those issues, what he's looking for to determine, what we need to confirm. That's why he asked if we could do the test pitting to make sure that the, because that road was built a while ago. We just wanna make sure that the gravel is adequate, we do have the proper gravel, you know, basin there for that. So that we could begin to town vote for the road to become town.
So, okay, so ultimately it wouldn't be a private lane off of a private lane?
That's correct. The road that we intend to build on Oak Ridge Terrace, we're gonna be building for town specs as well.
Okay, so you'll be bringing the entire thing to town meeting for approval?
That's correct.
And then the town would maintain that road, is that right?
Hopefully.
They always accept.
But we do, we do have, we also did document, my attorney worked with the neighbors and the bodies that if in retrospect the town did not approve this as a town road, that we are all involved in the maintenance of the roads as, as a road association. Which is already recorded in the registry deeds. It would just add our, the folks that we sell to would be part of that association as well if the town did not accept the roads for whatever reason.
So you're covered either way.
Yes.
So from the very start of Laura Lane up through to the end of Oak Ridge?
At the end of Laura Lane down past.
Right, yeah.
It'll be past Laura Lane towards the Laura Lane cul-de-sac.
Yep.
And then we'll be bringing that road in and then that cul-de-sac off, off Oak Ridge Terrace, that was, that's what we.
From where that road on.
Correct.
Well, that was a Herculean feat to get everybody together and get it all, yeah, kudos to you guys.
I, I don't, I haven't seen that in my career.
It worked out well for everybody, obviously.
Looks like it.
It's taking time, and I wanted to get going here soon in the land, but I think it's, I think it's to the benefit of everybody.
Now, I do remember a question about the beginning of Laura Lane and a drainage or something, another?
I brought that up, mine.
Yes.
I brought that up. I spoke to Jason about it, the end where Laura Lane starts from the South Skilling Road.
Yep.
Years ago, there was a culvert there. And for whatever reason, Roger took it out. And then they hot top, they put a little hot top patch so the bus, school bus can turn around. What it's done is it's dammed the water, I, I have no drainage now. And so I asked Jason, I said, can you do something about that? He said, because it used to be a culvert and went into a catch basin on the other side of Laura Lane.
Jim, that's something we can, we can meet with Roger on site.
Yeah.
I mean, Roger's the guy that's gonna say yea or nay to.
Yeah, I spoke to Roger the other day, he said, just ask, you know, you know, have that paying care when they do the road. We can do that.
Can you talk all the way down here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might be getting along like where it meets South Skilling.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can go down and see the little pond areas, so.
Yeah, no problem.
That'd be great. That's all the issue, the issue I have.
See, I, I, I would think that since it's the intersection of two town roads, you'd have to have a cul-de-sac to want it to flow over anyway. A cul-de-sac.
Where is, where is the catch basin? Go up Laura Lane, this little ways, there's a cross culvert.
That's correct.
And it dumps down there. And so what Roger did to appease me a couple of years ago, I was, I was, geez, you gotta do something. So he went on Laura Lane, he ditched it, not enough pitch. That cross culvert probably should come down just a little bit more up there.
Give the water.
Yeah.
Where's that cross culvert, not by Peter's property?
It's, it's before Petron's property, it's halfway between the, the, the beginning of the road and halfway to, to Dolly and Jerry's property. There's a cross culvert.
Yep, yeah, right up there. Yeah, you kinda see where the calls, the contours are, so there's that little spot there.
Yeah, that's it.
And this is where you, this is where you're ponding here?
This is, this is my property here.
Oh, so you're ponding right here.
I'm ponding here, that's why I cut the grass.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And it's too flat to run down to the other.
Yeah, can we get to that culvert? Can we ditch to that culvert?
Yeah, they did.
They did, that's not, that's what you said, they dredged it.
I don't think they wanted to get into tearing up Laura Lane and lowering that cross culvert.
Yep, and the catch basin you were talking about is down in this area?
What's that?
The catch basin you were talking about.
Yeah, catch bay, there's a catch basin right here.
Yep.
And there's a, there's a culvert goes all the way out and then across South Skilling Road, there's another cross culvert that dumps into a small pond. And that's how it used to run, I've been there forty years, that's how it used to run.
And did it work well, Jim, that way?
Yeah. Yep. I don't know why Roger filmed. Well, you know, I asked, I said, why'd you take it out? He said, well, he says, he says, where your property is, is, is a high point of South Skilling Road. He said, I didn't think it did anything. But it did.
How's the school bus?
Because Laura Lane essentially dams that and everything, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and even just a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I can't mow the lawn, you know, I would say I get stuck, I was stuck the other day with my lawnmower.
Well, we expect.
You can't, you can't use it.
Well, I know, but I mean.
You can't use it as an excuse with your wife? I mean, we work with mine. Sorry, get my lawnmower, lawnmower won't go.
She's probably been running against somewhere.
Well, the, the notes that, that we have from the planner indicate that we probably should have it peer reviewed.
That's what they say in term, they're gonna have a peer review of the road and everything else.
No, we, it's our engineer that does the work, not, not theirs.
So a peer review of the stormwater plan and the nutrient study.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be part of the, you know, for the final plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think stormwater now, we've already designed it to chapter five hundred, which isn't required yet for, at this point, so I think stormwater should be pretty good.
So are you having to do any D E P permitting with this?
Uh, there's a P B R, there's a stormwater P B R that we're into, but.
Yeah, given, given something of this size, then, you know, we probably do wanna have it peer reviewed. And probably, and, and the road and, you know, all of the other fun stuff, just to make sure that everything is up to the town standards.
So, so in my experience, that review would be done before a preliminary approval would be granted?
Final.
Yeah, probably right, yeah.
No, before, before preliminary, because technically that's to get all of my, in my experience, the, the preliminary approval would get all of the technical issues out of the way and ironed out. And then final approval is pretty much just for, you know, the, the final subdivision docs and, and legal documents that would need to take place.
So we would have to get the peer review done before we determine completeness?
No. No, no, not completeness.
Okay.
But preliminary approval.
So before we have the public hearing?
No.
No.
Oh, because after the public hearing, it's a vote on whether or not we.
For subdivision?
Yeah.
Is that same as site plan?
Pretty much. I think, I believe it is.
We should verify that.
And, and that's why it would be good if that were here.
Right.
No, but I believe that it, the process is essentially the same. There are just, there are some different standards that have to be met in terms of how things are done.
I, I thought before final, everything had to be submitted because before final, if we don't have it, we can't turn outside off.
Right, that's, that's what I was saying, that's why, that's why before we have the public hearing, we have to have all of that stuff done. Because once we have the public hearing, we have determined that it is complete and we have gone forward to public hearing.
Right.
Now, if an issue comes up at public hearing, then it can continue on, but we wanna get that taken care of first.
As far as preliminary, preliminary approval, I think all the pieces have been met in terms of that. I would've thought the town planner would've sent that out for peer review prior to this meeting if it was necessary.
No, he would not.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's something that we have to order.
Uh, that's a decision we make.
At the preliminary approval meeting, you make whether, okay.
Right, yeah, because we could always tell you, no, we don't want it.
Right, right.
I, can I raise two points?
Yeah.
So can I walk up and just hold this thing?
Can you say who you are?
I'm, I'm Mike, I'm a, a butter, Mike, Mike Madel, a butter. So initially, there were two separate lots here that were included in the total number of subdivisions, correct? Remember going back?
Yeah.
And then it was determined the last meeting that if it's a cluster subdivision, then the lots have to be clustered, right? So I clarified with Tad after that meeting that, you know, it would make sense for Walter just to retain these two lots and then at a later time, he could sell them off, right? That would make sense. That's what I would do, to be quite, quite honest. And it looks like that's what he did. It's depicting a two-point-eight-six-eight acre lot and a four-point-six that says Oak Ridge Terrace, not part of subdivision, correct? So, and I also clarified with Tad that if you were to develop these two lots at a separate date, it would be, or transfer or sell these separate lots at a separate, at a separate date, there would be a five-year wait after the, after the subdivision, is that correct?
No.
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 Those lots are.
Five years within.
Probably right away.
Yeah.
That's, that's what Tad said and then another, the subdivision regulations say there's a five-year wait.
So it would've been five years from the lot separation, March, March of fourteen.
If it's, if it's inclu, if it's being divided with this proposal, then it's, then it's covered, but if not.
Yeah, exactly.
But I believe if it's not divided now, you would have to wait five years.
So, 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 so I guess, I guess my, I guess my, the reason I brought this up in the first place was, so the cluster division has to cluster. So what is the point of making that rule if a subdivision is clustered and then just sell lots up anyways immediately? And then, and then, and then if you look at the subdivision regulations, I think I found the page, I mean, I'm, I'm by no means um, let's see, page six to seven, it talks about dividing a tract.
Lots existing.
No. Those lots were not existing.
They're legally, they're legally separated.
They're already, my attorney already reviewed.
They are legally separated is what I'm asking.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Offside at the first point.
Yeah.
So Mike, what do you primarily concern about?
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about there's already thought when it were going on at this lot. And I was told by Tad that there had to be a five-year wait.
They were already separated.
They were not separated prior to this whole parcel being bought this year and, and they're leaving.
The, the legal, the legal aspect is, is because I have not received preliminary approval that I've not had a completeness package, that I could break off, I could break that lot off because the last separation on that piece of property was March two thousand fourteen, which was your property sale. And after that, legally, I could break off a lot for that purpose, as well as being that it's over forty acres. The state also allows me to break off another lot because of forty acres.
So you're saying, so, so you measure, you measure five years from when it was last broken off?
That's correct, exactly right.
So.
So when, when, when were they broken off?
March two thousand fourteen.
Farm itself.
My, no, 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 these two lots were newly broken off.
Just, just recently, just prior, just, a month or two prior to this meeting.
The point is, if I may, I believe probably the initial division of ten acres, if, if, and I'm not sure of this, but there's the homestead exemption, that the old man that lived there for many, 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 many years before he sold the lot to this gentleman, the first ten acres, that's an exempted division because he lived there, was in residence there as a primary residence for five years at least prior to that sale. That's why that sale didn't count as the first sale, that was not the first outlaw, that's why.
That's correct.
He retains the right to do two of them. That one, we're not concerned about that. Correct, correct, but that's, but, but, but that's the division that was over five years ago and allows him to.
To me, that division is a moot point, because we're talking about in reference to a cluster subdivision.
No.
No, because these are already done, now this is the subdivision, this existing remaining lot is the lot being subdivided.
If you read six to seven in the subdivision or the.
Why don't you talk to my attorney, Mike, that would be the best thing. Have your attorney talk to my attorney.
So, all right, Ted, Walter, to be honest, I can't afford attorneys, so hence we have this public forum.
Well, we, before we talk, like, rather than get into the debate between two people.
It is a public forum.
Yes, no, it's not a public forum. Um, but I had that same question before you brought it up, I was looking at those two that split off and, and I don't know why they're not part of the entire application, that subdivision of.
Because I didn't want them. And then Walter's.
But.
But we do have a limit of when you can do that, we do have.
Correct, it's prior to preliminary approval, which.
So you, you already subdivided it.
Correct.
No, 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 I subdivided it, I legally broke it off based on state statute.
That's a subdivision, no.
It's, it's, it's a, it's a lot separation.
Careful with the use of the word subdivision, that's the one that's three lots or more than a five year period.
Splitting it up, splitting up a property.
That's a, that's a property division.
Correct.
Property division, how, how many, uh, how soon can you do it? I know, I, I'm, I'm the understanding that you have to wait five years.
Yeah.
And that was, and that was Tad's.
That's why we're here, because you don't, to do subdivision now.
Well, no, 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 so there's two different issues, there's the cluster subdivision and then there's separate lots that are separate from each other subdivision.
Right, and I think he's entitled to his division prior to.
No, we just did the same thing.
Because of his point about preliminary plan approval, which we're not getting done.
And we was fine to this.
And, and he's got the attorney read on that, apparently we didn't get it in writing, but we're gonna probably have to produce that in writing to your satisfaction. Because if an attorney has given us this read on the subdivision law, then none of us are attorneys.
Well, and it's not, don't be so quick to say that, cause there are people on the board that are attorneys.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I say about land.
I know the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanna have, if you want the town attorney to review the documents that my attorney did, that's fine.
Yeah, I think.
We should probably have that looked at.
Yeah.
So, so let, can I, now let me understand the chronology of things, cause you talked about the, the homestead exemption.
And that was only referenced into Rodney himself, the original Rodney.
So which, which parcel is that?
That's the ten acre out parcel.
This, this guy right here, that's my property, that's thirteen acres. That's thirteen acres.
So really that, that has no bearing on what you currently own right now?
That, that's.
That's correct.
So, as I understand it, you've separated off two point six eight acres.
Correct.
And you've separated, you've created a two point six eight acre lot.
Correct.
And a four point six six acre lot.
That's correct.
And then a seventy point zero eight acre lot.
Correct.
Right, out of the whole, you know, seventy.
Fifty-six point something.
Whatever it is.
That's correct.
I mean, so ultimately, I, I would question if that already hasn't triggered the subdivision.
Again, I, I don't have a problem if you'd like to, you know, I can, I can just give you my attorney's name and you can touch base with him and, and your attorney could review that and make sure it's legit and.
Yeah, if you could, if you could get that to us, cause I would like to have, I have the same question Jamie had about it, cause it sounds to me as if that subdivision has already taken place. And it, and, and it's been, because it's been subdivided into three acres or three parcels.
The, three parcels.
And that's, that's the concern I would have, if that's the case, I question whether or not you can subdivide, do the, do the subdivision.
Yeah, um, again, the forty acre trigger, if you look at state statute, the forty acres does not create a subdivision or a separate lot issue, only forty acres or more, breaking that off, and this is again, this is based on my attorney's analysis.
Okay.
And, and again, I could just get that information and.
So, so the, so the forty, so the large seventy acre piece of lot.
Correct.
Is, from what you're saying, your attorney's interpretation is exempted as being called a lot.
That's correct.
Within the subdivision because of the size of it.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then the two point six acre lot is my, is my one time separation, which greased the remaining acreage.
Yeah.
For that reason, that's, that's.
Well, but you've also got a four point six. Four point six six.
Well, that's the, that's the one from the forty acre separation, which is exempt. It's two exemptions.
So is the two point six eight coming off of that same overall parcel or a separate parcel?
It's coming off the same parcel.
And one point of clarification about that two point six eight acre parcel, I believe as of May seventeenth, that's already been taken off, that was already, so as of May seventeenth, this has been transferred from Oak Ridge Terrace to another party.
Okay, so that, that, I mean, it's, it's legal to separate parcels off.
Right, yeah.
And that's in my, I separated that to my wife's name, it's in my wife's name, so that, that's where that lot is, that two point six acre.
But again, I think, I, I think for our purposes, we need to see the information from your attorney and have it reviewed by our, our attorney, just to make sure that everything is.
Sounds like, sounds like a legal peer review.
I'd rather have my coach, we just have our attorney look at our regulations and see if this.
Well, she, she could look at what his attorney provided and compare it to what the ordinance says, to make sure that, that it's in conform, that it works.
Yeah, it's a state action.
And I do think we need to have that looked at.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
Because in my, in my opinion, that would be an easy way just to circumvent all the cluster subdivision laws. If that's allowed, that is.
The state main allows a legal separation of a lot.
But the question is, will our ordinance allow it? So, it's just, if, if our ordinance is stricter, then our ordinance applies.
Page six question. Good question, I'm, I'm not sure if that's the case.
Page, and I'm, that's why we need the attorney.
Page six to seven, it says, I believe it mentions, uh, prior to the, the transfer or donation of separate lots, the donor must hold the lot for five years. Um, and I believe that's the only thing I could really find that Tad may be mentioning, um.
And again, I think, I think we're gonna have the town attorney review this.
Right, yeah, we're gonna have the, the attorney look at it to, to make sure that we understand.
So in a perfect world, Mike, what would you like to see happen? You want the five year wait period to start?
At, 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 yeah, at, at, at least a wait period, otherwise, otherwise it completely bypasses the whole cluster divisions must cluster.
That's why they call it a exemption.
Right, so you have to have Leah look at it.
We need to have Leah take a look at it.
Leah look at it.
Please.
Yeah, and, and will that, um, Tad know to set up the peer review?
Peer review for the, uh, nitrate study in the stormwater?
And they're doing the road to it.
And the road, yeah.
Do you guys, um, I don't, are you guys just gonna wait for the attorney or do you want me to?
Nope, we're gonna wait for the attorney.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, no, no disrespect, Mike.
No, no, no.
I, I see what you're saying in here, I want the attorney to tell me, I understand what, what it says.
Wait for it to go nice total, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we had a question, minor subdivision, I just wanted to make the board aware and the applicant aware. I had it just a second ago, preliminary plan for a major subdivision.
Yeah.
What I was looking at was, in thirty days, upon determination that the app, a complete application has been submitted for review, uh, place the application on the agenda. And the board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the preliminary plan application, if it, it shall hold the public, shall hold the hearing within thirty days of the determination that it's received a complete application. Within thirty days from the public hearing or sixty days of determination that the complete application has been received, um, the board shall make a finding on the application for the preliminary plan.
Right.
So that would be after, the preliminary plan approval would be after the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Point of clarification, please, is there a second public hearing at the final?
It.
Nah, that's Sally. Is that your discretion or is that required? I'm asking sometimes it's a requirement of the board, other times it's the discretion of the board.
Yep. Right.
I think it is that on discretion. Um, a lot of it might depend on relationship with Navy so far from good, but.
Well, yeah, no, I, I think that there, there would be, if you continue, if we continue on when we get to section eight, within six months after the approval of the preliminary plan, you have to submit the final plan for approval. So, yeah, it, it does, it does seem to indicate, uh, whether we would, whether we would have another public hearing at that point is, is up to the board, but you will end up with the first one.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and it does give us the discretion, the board shall determine whether to hold a public hearing on the final plan application, if the board decides to hold a public hearing, shall be within thirty days, so.
And so you'll have sixty days from the date that the, the preliminary is approved, you'll have six months in which to submit the final application. And if you don't, you'll have to go back and start with the preliminary all over again.
We'll go back as quickly as we can.
Now, it, it does say that before submission of the final plan, the following approvals need to be obtained in writing, something from the main department of environmental protection. You're not gonna be using a public water system, so DHS won't matter. Engineered subsurface wastewater disposal, you will need something from DHS on that.
That's not applicable because this won't, not.
Oh, that's right, you said they're gonna be.
These are individuals, nothing engineers about anything.
There's gonna be individuals, sorry about that. Uh, US Army Corps of Engineers?
They're not involved either because we're not in their jurisdiction.
We will need to know about DOT, however.
That trip generation was included there.
Is it?
Yeah, and, and it didn't trigger any.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Any TOT.
If, if it's not triggering, then I have a problem.
Yeah.
That's right, it's not, it's not significant.
Yeah, that was included.
Do you know, do you know if it'll trigger it when you do the second basin?
That I'd have to ask Jason.
That's yet to be determined.
How about for, for the fire, um, department, the water supply to.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, well, we had that, that water.
Well, we, uh, we discussed, um, originally the fire chief wanted both, um, speculums systems in the home and, um, some type of cistern, but then, um, the ordinance says one or the other.
Oh, so you're going with the cistern.
So we're gonna go with a fifteen thousand gallon, uh, interior cistern, uh, that will, will, um, will put in strategically for the purpose of making sure that we meet, you know, the, the length of how far, you know, that hose could be from, uh, that cistern to the homes. As well as try to, and try to meet a future second phase as well, so it, it works with that as well. So right now, you want a minimum of fifteen thousand gallon, uh, cistern tanks.
Have you determined where that would be yet?
What's that?
Have you determined where it would be?
We did it in this area.
I, I, if, if you, if you will, I've got a copy here on the tablet of Jason's email to Tad, which speaks to the fire chief, he met on Thursday the twentieth.
They agreed that they should put the fifteen thousand gallon cistern around station one plus zero zero on the proposed roadway. The tank will be installed per the ordinance with full pull off, proper pipes and threading and center, this detail on easement will be added to the final subdivision app. I believe the chief was going forward some correspondence on the matter. Public Works Director, he also met with him out on Laura Lane on the twenty sixth, that was the required improvements to the road. Roger's gonna report back to you, but came up with the agreement that some test cuts should be done, blah, blah, blah. Laura Lane Road Rehabilitation Plan as a separate document will be provided that outlines and details the improvements required. But the town will want a third party inspector for the offsite improvements.
So you're already working with, with that one?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's the essence of his and the other Tad.
Um, I'm note, I'm seeing here you had a wetland delineation done last fall?
Yeah, the actual flagging, the identification, I've been on this property since back when this gentleman bought the farm and reviewed wetlands, walked a lot of the seventy acres even at that point. So I've seen this property and seen the wetlands on this property multiple seasons, but in fact, the delineation was in those three months that Jason cited, I think it was, uh.
Yeah, September, October, November of eighteen. Any, um, assessment of vernal pools?
Um, we did a complete survey for vernal pool habitat at the time we did the wetland delineation, we, uh, in previous springtime seasons, I walked this in, uh. My experience with vernal pools, when I go back to two thousand and four, when the law first came on the books, two thousand and five, two thousand and six was when they first started enforcing. Uh, the drainage, the wet areas on this property tend to be flowing or moving waters. The areas where the development was gonna be proposed, we purposely brought Lucia Wang Law, the DEP Field Services staffer to come and look at the sort of wetland systems that are closest in proximity to the development. Uh, he agreed and put together a form that suggested these are streams, they're moving, uh, water. The definition, the very definition of vernal pool is that it's a closed depression with no inlet and no outlet. We can talk all day long about where frog and salamanders may lay egg masses, but I wanna make a distinction that, uh, in order for it to be a vernal pool, according to the DEP, it has to be naturally occurring. It has to be this closed depression, it has to be ephemeral, meaning it dries up summer most seasons. Many things have been misidentified or misreported or whatever reason, in any case, felt strongly that there was no vernal pool habitat anywhere on this property in a fashion that would affect this proposed subdivision. Meeting all standards of the DEP, saying that anything, in order for anything to affect the building sites on this property, you'd have to be within two hundred and fifty feet. There is nothing of that nature. And the two hundred and fifty foot mark that always is spoken about with regard to DEP significant vernal pools, these are the most important ones, DEP or the Corps recognizes. Uh, they get a two hundred and fifty foot zone around them, not a setback, so everybody wants to refer to that two fifty as a setback. It's a two hundred and fifty foot zone around the thing, and this is after it's been studied and proven to be significant, per standards, has to have the requisite number of egg masses. Uh, or the, the observance of an actual rare threatening endangered species. And that effect would only extend two hundred and fifty feet from the edge of that vernal pool. DEP standards, Corps standards, they regulate the amount of clearing you can do around it. They don't, they don't, the DEP standard doesn't even make a setback for the vernal pool, they just regulate how much you can clear around it. The Army Corps of Engineers, they want a hundred feet of setback if you're in their jurisdiction. Again, we're not in a water bond or a wetland of the United States with the proposed, uh, road or any of the infrastructure, so it's not a jurisdictional thing for the Corps to look at.
So bottom line is, the, there are no vernal pools.
There's no.
There's no significant vernal pool.
There's. Or, well, you said because they have, they have inlet and outlet, so that makes it if it's flowing, it's not a vernal pool, is that right?
There's no. There's no vernal pool. Correct, it's not meeting the definition, maybe egg masses in the slow movement stream, I'm not, I'm not gonna deny that, but it's not what.
So he's saying DEP came out and looked at these things and didn't.
They can.
So, so is that correspondence been provided in the application?
I don't know if that was.
So it just should be?
Yeah, it will.
It definitely, yeah.
I, I know it got into the code enforcement office, cause they don't write those without sending a, a copy to the town.
But it, it should be submitted as far as.
But I don't know.
We'll, we'll.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Right, I think, just one point of clarification, I'm sure, obviously Jim could state to this, there's very specific times a year when vernal pool should be assessed, is that correct, Jim?
That is correct, uh, April and May are the two months to do, uh, actual field identification that would involve the, uh, actual counting of egg masses in any one location. But, uh, that would be triggered by finding habitat that meets the definition.
So I, I can say that I had a wetland surveyor and, uh, actually kind of bordering, um, my property and Walter's property, I have found a vernal pool of significance and have it documented. I think it was shared with Jim by the wetland surveyor.
I never got a documentation of where that was.
Well, I can, I can forward it to people, and I'm, I guess I am.
And you have recorded it?
I, I do, Rick Jones did it.
He sent it to Jason.
He, he said he wasn't professionally share it with you, I don't, I can forward it to you if you want.
It would be helpful.
Okay.
Uh, and all I would say to the board, because I thought this might come up, it was mentioned to me. It was mentioned to me both by Rick Jones, the consultant that worked for him, I also was contacted at one point by Jake Clement, the head of the Army Corps of Engineers, or copied anyway on some questions raised by these folks. Uh, regarding the Corps' oversight of vernal pools, in the event we were in their jurisdiction, which we're not, point to be made is that anywhere along this line, this is a one inch equals one hundred and fifty foot scale. If you put that down here, from anywhere along his property line to any part of the proposed subdivision, even to the edge of one of the lots, is three hundred feet. All right, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yeah, the, the, so, I don't know how the board feels about, I feel that the property was not adequately assessed for vernal pools, given that you actually can't count egg masses unless it's done in the spring.
Again, I wanna reiterate that if you don't have an area that meets the criteria and the definition within the DEP standards for what a vernal pool is, I don't think we're required to look for egg masses there. I, I've, I've done this work for a lot of years, you can find egg masses in a skid row, okay? I can find egg masses in a tipped over bathtub in the woods, uh, rubber tire, half full of water, the things will lay egg masses anywhere. I just wanna, and, and you folks all have property here in Rundle, I just wanna try to make some distinction, we, we wanna wax and wane really seriously over where salamanders and frogs live, and I get that, cause I do this stuff for a living. But just because a frog or a salamander will go there and dump an egg mass, doesn't make it significant. But just because a frog or a, a salamander will go there and dump an egg mass doesn't make it significant, though. That's my point. And I do feel that I, and with, with my professional background and the amount of my career doing this kind of work, I do feel like we have studied this property adequately and we've assured that this proposal is consistent with all the requirements.
You said that the fellow that conveyed that to you was from the DEP?
Um, actually, I, I had a correspondence from his private consultant who found the significant thing on his property.
Right, yeah, I remember hearing about that.
And then, and then I was referring to Jake Clement, the head of the US Army Corps of Engineers name office, who contacted me. Just wanted to include me in the conversation that these folks had, and his point was that we don't have jurisdiction because there's no wetland.
But I, I thought you had, had referenced someone that had, had.
Lucian.
You that there was.
Lucian Wanglaw from the DEP, he's Field Services Staff, came out, reviewed the area of the proposed subdivision with me and put a letter together.
I think.
And it's in, and we will provide.
And, and we. Give us that one.
Jim, just one point of clarification, I believe, uh, Lucian came out to clarify the stream crossing, where, where the, where the original road was gonna go, is that correct?
Lucian looked at everything around the proposed development.
Okay.
Look, I took them all around the.
Okay, I would, I.
The whole area that was gonna be developed, I wanted them to look at all the wetlands surrounding it.
I would love to, I would like.
Because I just had a feeling, my spidey senses were tingling.
So I can just.
I thought there might be some others.
Two points of clarification is I have the determination from Lucian and I believe he specifically discusses. I don't know if there's other determinations that I don't know about, obviously. But I, he does specifically discuss that crossing. And two, I was concerned to see the DEP, I, I saw Jim's car at the end of the runway. And I was concerned about the DEP coming out there because I can tell you there was probably ten inches of snow that day. I have photos of that day. And I was, to be honest with this heart, and the DEP was gonna come out and assess for wetlands when there was ten inches of snow pack.
Can I speak? What the letters reference?
Yes, please. Yeah, I'm multiple, I'm the applicant. Obviously, the first time we came to this board, we had quite a few neighbors in here and we were trying to work with everybody to make this work. Obviously, we're not satisfied, Mr. Nando, because he doesn't want anybody building around this property. I have a right to this property, I've had the professionals do the job that's necessary to get things done. He had a vernal pool assessment done on his property that's significant. And again, it's three hundred feet away from even the property line of any properties that were actually subdividing and developing. So personally, if we're not, if we don't have a public hearing here today, I would ask the board that we no longer hear this gentleman. Members of discussion, we move forward, members to completeness. As, I'm the applicant, I paid for this process, I appreciate your time and efforts. But at this point, I'm getting very frustrated and, uh, and I think, you know, we, we could resolve the issues that you folks are looking for. I've had Jim do the analysis, I have a professional engineer doing what's necessary. I'm asking the board that we move forward, we're not allowing open public hearing at this point. And we get this and resolve this issues that we have at hand.
At this point, we'll, we'll let, uh, the town planner know when he, he'll be back next week and he'll set up the, the, the various peer reviews that we're looking for. Give, send him the letters, uh, from Lucian and any of the other information you have, and then we will proceed forward from there. We've already done the sidewalk, there's no reason to go out and do it again. If you had decided to come in off South Skilling's Road, then we'd end up doing it again. But coming in at the same spot on Laura Lane just makes no sense to go back out and do it again.
And I've just, I've just worked with everybody to make it work. And, and I'm just, there's always someone you can't satisfy or please. And I'm at the point where I spent a lot of time with the neighbors trying to make it work for everybody. And I'm just asking the board that you take that into consideration. No wetland fills. I've moved things out, I'm finishing a road that's existing that's, that's not built to towns here, that we're gonna create that. So all these things are positive attributes to what this town is looking for. So I'm asking that the board look at those issues and those items of what we're trying to do to make this work for the town as well as ninety-nine percent of the neighbors. Thank you.
The topographic information that's been submitted for this application indicates that the wetlands that are predominantly within any of the, the areas of lots, and it's just this few, and it's all the way at the very bottom of the, of the back of those lots, is all sloping pretty good, there's pretty good topo lines, there are two, three, four feet.
So we saw that when we did the walk.
Yeah.
So my, my point is again, vernal pool habitat needs to be near level, nearly level, and it needs to be, uh, a, a closed depression. These are, are sort of.
So on, on a completely, on a completely different.
Yeah.
Do you have any open space?
Yes, twenty-two acres, I think.
Twenty-two acres.
Where six and change is required.
Okay. And that, that will be permanent open space?
Right.
I think that's what.
It, uh, a, will Conservation Trust get in touch with you?
No.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna deed it.
We'll let, we'll leave them alone and let them do it if they want to.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll deed, we're gonna deed that specifically. And, and it'll be part of all the deeds of record, that that will be conservation area. And we actually have areas of no tree cutting and some other areas that we're gonna have to footnote in there as well.
Well, I, I was talking with a couple of, a couple of my friends are on that committee and they were wondering about hiking trails and stuff. And I told them to get in touch with, with you guys. I'm not involved with it.
Already agreed system of hiking trails there.
There you go.
Please, by Jim.
Okay.
Is this a, a I three zone or?
This is our two, it's across the street from my house.
Okay.
Which, um, is two acres.
Correct.
And how many, how, how many acres of, 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 of trees?
Twenty's. It's twenty-two right now.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, almost twenty-three.
One or two, almost twenty-three. And a six point three five required of the.
Okay, well, I, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? I think at this point we'll proceed forward, we'll, we'll have Mr. Redway get in touch with you and make arrangements, again, for the peer reviews and for all of the other fun stuff. Get him the rest of the information and we should be.
Do we have, do we have the completeness or do we? Completeness for the purpose of getting the public hearing in the works? As far, as far as your preliminary requirements, I don't feel like we missed any of those.
Rich, were you just not gonna line up a peer review of the submission? Would it not be complete if you're gonna pull the trigger on peer review? I mean, it's to me, it's.
Well, you know, I think I, let me take a look at it, you may, you may have a valid point there.
You could go through section by section as far as what is required.
Preliminary, did you, did you, did you?
I think, I think, Reg, if, if it is preliminary completed because.
We can determine, well, I'm just, I'm looking at section seven one D that says, you know, within thirty days of the receipt, we can determine that it is complete and if the town planner in his review finds out that something's missing, he'll let you know.
That's what I'm saying, it is.
I, I would call if you, if you have, um, like, uh, the, um, association agreement or whatever.
It's in there.
Homeowners?
Yeah, it's in there.
Homeowners agreement, great.
Yep, that's part of the application.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they said, um, they were gonna do it either way. If there was town, if there was ever a town approved, but they have a homeowners association in place with Laura Lane and, or any of the other new lots. If it's not accepted, it's already in place. Am I correct?
That's correct, and that, and that, that association's actually already recorded the registry deeds for Laura Lane. And I'll just be, become part of that.
It's built into the mix of every lot.
Yeah, either way, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
CYB.
Or CCR.
Yeah.
Where's the process for following up with the town attorney regarding the separate developments from my end?
Where's, where's going to have the town planner get in touch with the town attorney?
Okay.
Why don't you let them do that first?
They'll, they'll submit that in some paper.
And then also, or, or early next week sometime, okay. And then I, I guess the reason I ask is.
We don't have a year of this anymore, do we?
Wait, 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 that's hard to say.
Okay, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if we decided to move on from that.
And I, I guess the reason I'm concerned is there's, there's like a development sign by gray stone builders, the end of my driveway, et cetera, et cetera.
Development's a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a customer builder.
Or, sorry, yeah, I, I'm sorry.
It's a building sign, I'm a, I'm a builder, that's.
And I, I'm, I'm just concerned about progress moving forward without an official determination, all right?
They, they will not move forward without an official determination. If they do, they'll receive a notice of violation from, from the Code's Enforcement Officer and a, and a stop work order.
Okay.
And the thing is, next week is shortly because of validity. Just, so I'm just mentioning it as a thought.
Well, I, yeah.
You aren't gonna get much done, that's what I'm saying.
So can we legitimately give them some kind of?
Preliminary.
Or should we deem this complete or not?
Preliminary, yes.
So they can.
But like I said, with the holiday.
I think they have, I, I looked through the list of, of, in order to be, uh, considered complete. I went through it as far as I can see, everything.
Under preliminary, yes.
Under preliminary, we need nine copies of the application, which we have.
Yeah.
We have the maps that show the locations and the boundaries. We have the preliminary plan for the subdivision.
Yes.
The preliminary plan needs to include the following, proposed name of the subdivision, name of the, yeah, got all of that verification of right title and, and interest. We have the boundary, we have the, the recorded deed, we have a copy of the covenants and, and deed restrictions that are intended to cover. We have an indication of the sewage that you plan on using. Uh, the water system, we've told this is going to be private wells. We have the, the plan has been prepared dated north. Name and addresses of the record owner, the sub divider. Do we have a, a soil survey?
Oh, yeah.
We did, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, the number of acres within the proposed subdivision, the lines, the buildings, location of all river streams and brooks, contour alliance, which I have seen, land use district which proposed for the subdivision, location of existing and proposed sewer and drainage, that's, that's, you know, uh, names, names of the streets and, and the width of any streets, the proposed improvements, proposed lot plant lines with approximate dimensions and areas. And then the location of any open space, the area of each lot where existing forest cover will be permitted to be removed. I don't think that, I don't know if that, yeah, that'll apply because you've gotta clear out some, some property. But you've got that because you've shown us where the lots are gonna be.
You've got the grading for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A hydrologic assessment prepared by a certified geologist or registered professional engineer when the subdivision is not served by public sewer. Do we have that? Do we have anything on the?
Did you submit that, did you?
Yeah, we did, Nigel, Nigel did.
I think, I think I went through the notes, yeah, I think it was markup, didn't it go?
We, we actually surveyed, we said that in the last, the first meeting.
Some of the GIs or some?
Correct.
Some in engineer.
Some in engineer, some in engineering did that, Rich. Yeah, nope, Corinne just reminded me. Any, any of the subdivision that's over a sand rock, a gravel aquifer, which would have been identified in that survey, a subdivision has an average densities, density of more than one, one dwelling.
That's a cross.
One hundred square feet. The vehicular traffic, you've, you've already indicated. You've got something from, that indicates that this is not high or moderate value wildlife area? Cause section seven, seven-two D twenty-five.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, they did the, um, they did the analysis from the state, uh, the state.
Yeah.
But, and, um, and that was submitted again in the first submission that we sent to you folks.
Uh, subdivision is in, it's not in brimstone ponds, we don't care, not gonna generate more than four hundred trips. The only question that we're really gonna have is the subdivision.
By the attorney.
Right, by the attorney. That's the only piece that we would actually be missing. If you provide us with that information, we can determine that it is complete. But if the, if the attorney comes back and says, no, you cannot, then that's gonna overrule.
And if the attorney comes back and says that, then one of those lots will be, then we'll just take one of those lots right off.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Or make it smaller. Because it, it, does a cluster development require them to be next to each other? Or is it just the size? Cause if it was clustered, it's just the size, so technically we just make that lot smaller.
Yeah.
You don't really need to know that now, right now we can give you.
Right, yeah, right.
So let's, let's try to give you exactly what you need so you can, and then let the attorneys figure that out.
But just from a.
Let's. I like it.
We can, we can make the determination of.
The, the other piece of that that I would like to add in is just confirmation of the agreement with, uh, getting access out onto Laura Lane where that's, that's a private lane right now.
We submitted that to TAD. Uh, we actually submitted the signatures, uh, my attorney drafted out language and it from, and, and agreement.
Yeah.
Which then all the, uh, artists signed on Laura Lane. And we submitted that, I submitted that to Jason by email and Jason told me he would make that part of the package, uh, here as well. But if not, I do have that, I can easily get it to the town later.
Okay, yeah, just, we'll, we'll end up needing that for final approval.
I'm pretty sure it's, it, it should have been with your package. But if not, I can make sure.
It may have been, but we've had, we've had the package for a while.
Homeowners Association. Yeah, he's got that, yeah. I don't know.
I can make a motion that is preliminary complete at this time.
Motion has been made in second to determine the applic- application com- complete for preliminary purposes.
Thank you.
Preliminary subdivision application. Any questions? Any, nothing for the applicant? Any discussion amongst ourselves? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We will, at some point, need to schedule a public hearing.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Once, once we get the other information, we'll be able to set up that date and proceed forward next.
Should I have my attorney touch base with TAD or the town attorney directly?
Touch base with TAD.
Yeah.
Run, run everything through the town planner.
He needs it. He's up, he, he's done the next, uh.
The next item up on the agenda is an amendment to the subdivision regulations.
You shouldn't here look at the seven-one eight. If the board decides to hold a public hearing, it shall hold the hearing within thirty days of the determination that it, it has received a complete application and shall publish a notice, publish a notice and the date and time in newspaper. So we've got thirty days in order to do a public hearing.
No, it's preliminary.
The preliminary, yes, we don't have to, but, but if we follow our standards, then, yes, we have thirty.
If? Yeah, it's an if we, but I, I mean, I think given the nature of this, I'd be very surprised if you don't do a public hearing.
Well, I think we should do a public hearing.
Right.
But, but the other thing is, that's why I mentioned it with the holiday and everything else along the way. We should have, that's why.
Cause it, cause you have to make that decision at the next meeting.
Correct.
And at that point, we will have received, hopefully, we will get something from the other.
And then, then the neck, the, the second meeting of July is the twenty-fifth, so that's within thirty days.
So we could have that meeting.
Okay, so we've gotta make sure we're mindful of that with the, at the eleventh.
But also too. But also too, do we not have the reweight of the thirty sixty day?
No, that is not our option, that is the applicant's option.
Okay, I thought.
And that's for approval, Mark, it's not for holding a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking of.
Are you back again? You're like a boomerang.
What'd you got, Paul?
Paul just. I don't know if you guys remember that Joey wrote the planning planner, he saw that letter.
Did not see it, but I did hear about it.
So.
Did she have to be like a grant writer?
Obviously, we're here tonight to ask the planning board to try and move this forward so that we can change it to every trip per day, which requires two entrances. Uh, we know that the planning board has authority to waive that under the subdivision regulations. But the plan, the planning board doesn't have the power to waive under the street regulations. So it's in both locations. We move forward this project, we have a good grade doing this, doing the traffic study for the project. I'm not sure how DOT is gonna shake out with it, but obviously, uh, we believe that one entrance will work, DOT. But however, DOT says it's okay to have one entrance and it works for them, we're still gonna pick up because we're two hundred every day, a trip per day. So we're gonna be over four hundred.
When I, when I first heard about it, the town planner and I were just. I, when I, when I first heard about it, with town planner and I were discussing it, it was, you know, if, if DOT says that you can get away with one, provide us with that information and it should not be a problem. But if DOT says that you, that you have to have two, then we're really in a pickle.
Well, not planning board per se, but if DOT says we are allowed one, we still have to amend the street requirement ordinance, so we can allow that. So we want to move that forward so that ninety days from now, when we get approvals from DOT.
But the street design ordinance is not ours, that is the town, so you would have to go through the selectmen to get them to fix that.
And I think the process of the planning board recommend to the selectmen, that they recommend that be changed, so I guess we're trying to see what the board's feeling as far as send that recommendation to, I don't know, the council, but to the selectmen in order to change that part of the street ordinance. And at the same time, subdivision.
Where did our Board of Selectmen representative go?
He was here testing the cameras to see if they worked, and then he said.
And then he's had enough?
He had enough. What happened with Phil Abbey Road? Were you able to get? You could have had a second entrance.
There's a couple of issues with that, I don't know if Phil, I don't know if Phil really understands what that would mean to his project. We're talking about, you know, I have to be honest, I have to talk to Phil, but trying to have a second entrance here. Now, who just bottlenecked his entire project. Cause you know, we'll be sending quite a few vehicles from our site, so a lot of them would probably take this and they want to turn left. Some of them don't want to turn left, so it'll be a lot of backup for those residential lots. Phil would really have to understand what that might mean, and then these guys have to work out a deal in order to provide that. So I'm not so sure if that would really happen, Phil said he was kinda, I don't think he really knows what would happen once the traffic study is complete and how that might affect this force, you know, he's gonna have four residential lots here, a couple of commercial, and this will be all commercial lots and with one would be a daycare, so a lot of traffic being dumped onto that other road.
What road is that on the right at the, so if you see the circle of the cul-de-sac, the roundabout, and if you move to the right, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take the.
Your other right fault.
The other right.
That's right, that's right.
So go to the middle of the circle and go right.
Go this way?
Yes, what road is that?
Oh, there's another going.
New road.
Oh, so that's a long way to.
That's, yeah, that's just.
Oh, I thought that was, that's just property line. Okay, sorry about that, I was looking for another way for you to get out.
I mean, ultimately, I think this project has identified something in our ordinance that is worth trying to address.
I agree. One of, one of the issues that concerns me about this whole thing is that when they finish the development on the rest of that subdivision, I don't know what DOT is gonna say. All of a sudden, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a huge number of people coming out. You've got six other lots back there that are gonna end up with businesses on them, I don't know what's going on.
Actually, during the, the traffic study, we are gonna make some assumptions, and traffic engineer, engineer, you know, it's, it's out of a book, it's a statistical analysis, they'll look at that lot size, that lot size might produce twenty vehicles per day or. So we'll be trying to make our best guess what will happen here, just to see what the entire outcome will be. Traffic Gen wants to do it in phases. Phase one would be the subdivision and daycare, and this would be phase two, or there might even be three phases to move this thing forward without actually holding up for a deadline for November fifteenth after the drop date deadline. So this may have to be done in phases, but even if DOT comes back and says, you know, we don't want two edges, you know, could be, that could be a possibility. They not, may not want a second one, cause that one's either close to New Road.
I think that's what's going on.
We don't know, right? So, we may, your ordinance may say we better have two, and DOT will come back, we would approve two or because it's closer to New Road section, we're not sure.
Excuse me, I have a thought. I have a thought, tell me if I'm anywhere near an idea or not. Where B and B is putting their new garage, coming off New Road in here, okay? But a little farther down, there is a, between, next to our electrical.
Yeah.
There is a rundown.
House in the back.
House in the back.
Behind Pleasant.
Huh?
Past and present auto.
So it is. No, 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 it's behind them.
Behind.
Yeah, it's, it's right next to the electrical place on New Road.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is the electrical place, I believe, on New Road, right at the corner, is what I'm talking about.
Yep, that's the spot right on the corner, right next to the, that house with a rusty door.
That cross.
It's almost, it's almost where the new driveway.
It's across New Road from B and B, as Marty's talking.
Yeah, yeah, I remember where that is.
That, and that would take approach and.
From what I understand, the gentleman that owns Past and Present Auto has sought after that rundown piece of property, and there was no talk about them giving it up. Somebody feels like they're sitting on a gold mine somewhere.
Well, no, no, I was just wondering, because it looks like it abuts yours property.
Uh, no, no, it doesn't, yeah.
Well, see, that's, that's what I was, that's why I was thinking it, it might abut. Cause it looks like a narrow lot.
Yeah.
Okay, but that might be another alternative, right? That's why I've only run my, my thoughts along the way, I mean, that's why we're here, perfect.
My, my thoughts on it, I don't, I, I think it's a good idea to amend the ordinance, cause I don't think DOT is going to give you the second entrance. They're gonna look at, Phil Abbey's got one right next to you, and we've got the New Road down here coming in, I don't think DOT is going to let you.
According to the traffic engineer, he didn't think so either, but I guess you'd have to go to Senator Kibler.
I have no problem making the changes.
So your, your, your proposal in business to go into that building. I think you can, you should be able to move forward while we're, while we're working on this.
That's definitely our intention, yes.
Okay.
Move forward with.
With, with your business, with.
The daycare building.
Daycare, yeah, I don't think this proposal will get in the way of you opening a business, and we can be working on both.
That's why we're talking about doing it in phases, so that phase one may not require the traffic permit. Phase two will, um, so.
What was the, what was the anticipated generation from your proposal?
So, Bill Gray, I made, I just found the little notes, Phil Gray mentioned, I thought he was gonna be here tonight, but he mentioned point eight trips.
That's correct.
And that was.
Per student.
For child, and, but that was during peak hours.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, he said that was within the count. I'm, I'll do about all this, I'm kind of learning as I go, but he thought that was within.
The parameters.
Parameters of what would not trigger.
So he must, he must use a certain, it's more than one child in a vehicle. Cause otherwise.
Well, that's, that's what they do.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yeah, I have several families that are two, three children, absolutely, yeah.
But from a total, our ordinance deals with a total trip, so.
Yes, and that's where we're, so if we're not triggering our issue with DOT, we're still triggering, triggering an issue with you. So in order for us to move forward, regardless of what DOT says, we still need you guys to potentially change.
So what was the, what was the estimate for total trips, just from your project?
Did we say?
How many students you gonna have?
The hope is hundred. And they're coming in, and they're leaving.
So that's two trips, so that's four trips, yeah.
But I don't know if then you have to also close that.
Right.
But the other thing is, might have a hun, it might have a hundred, okay? But the fact is, out of that hundred, you have several multiples.
Yes, you do.
In that, so you, so your hundred, just for an example, if you had ten, okay? You had ten into that, uh, out of the hundred, with two, three, whatever outside, your numbers are actually coming down.
It's already built into the formula now, it's why it's point eight.
Right, I think.
The point eight piece, the point eight piece, but not the total trips during the day.
So it's, it's really two criteria. One that we govern, the total, peak hour that the DOT governs with just that, this, whatever their peak hour. So that was sort of where I was going, where I think, I mean, in order to move forward immediately, would there be any option to stipulate no more than so many kids that we keep that at two fifty?
We talked about, oh, I don't know if we do.
We have sixty two. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what your business plan is.
Not within the big, not within the business plan, like I wouldn't feel.
I guess my thought, my thought is stipulate it now and then have everything working to change that going forward, that would then open it back up.
So that we can try and start moving forward immediately.
Right.
And then, right, I guess, I, I wouldn't know what kind of guarantee I would have that we would have mentioned up there.
And that's the risk.
Wouldn't, I wouldn't pull it off without the hundred kids, or at least at eighty percent, I'll break even.
So do you have morning and afternoon sessions, so it's a different?
It's a full day, it's all day.
Every child that comes is a full day?
That's what they register for, some mummies like to pick up before naptime, but maybe, maybe fifteen percent of them total. But it's pretty much a, a peak out, yeah, full hours.
What is peak time, what is peak time?
So between.
It varies on the business.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but I'm saying for, for the traffic count.
It varies on the business.
Yeah, depends on the business.
If she, if she is getting people who are dropping off kids before they go to work, you're looking at seven o'clock in the morning.
So, yeah, our peak hours, I looked through, all my parents have to sign in and sign out every time they pick up. So I kind of did the average and tried to figure it out. The morning is from seven to ten, leave it or not, and the evening, the afternoon is three thirty to five, no, excuse me, three thirty to six. And I think the afternoon is like that because people are picking up their children at the elementary schools and then coming right directly to pick up their babies.
Okay, so your peak hour, no, but by your peak hour, it's not, let's say, seven to eight. I'm saying it's, it's multiple hours, so you're actually, your trips are.
Diluted.
Diluted. And if they're diluted, besides three thirty to six, you're being diluted, you're not gonna be hitting that number.
So my question, does anybody here have the new street designs ordinance that the town passed? No. Because, because I know, I don't know if it addresses that issue. And if it does not, the answer lies in our subdivision ordinance, which does, and we can, we can change the subdivision ordinance by having a public hearing. And, and there's no other meeting involved, we would vote on that change.
I believe it's still in there.
I, I, and I don't know.
I didn't bring it, but.
Cause Marty's right, that's a pretty decent window of time from like seven to ten, it's three hours for people to come and go. And three to six or three thirty to six is also another decent window, so it's not like school starts at eight o'clock and everybody lets out at three.
But remember, peak hour is what DOT, that's what they go off of, our ordinance goes off of total.
Right.
So exactly, I don't feel what time they come.
Exactly, I mean, it could be spread out evenly from twenty-four hours, or it could be all within ten minutes.
But I think at, at this point, it's more of a question of what's DOT gonna say.
Well, not for us, well, we don't think we're gonna get tripped with just my business. What's gonna happen is when they try to go and, and continue, that's when they're gonna have to worry about.
And that may, that may be a.
Another scenario.
At some point in the future to look at.
Right.
But we're trying to take care of what's here.
To resolve what's there or not, cause it may take twenty years to, to finish the subdivision, I don't think it will, but there's always that possibility. We, we've got some.
Now, how old I am now?
Subdivision's in this town that they've been working on for fifteen years and they haven't finished it yet.
The enterprise drive has been going for a long time.
That's a good example. So it, it, it could conceivably take a long time to finish up. If we address the issue of yours, we can address the issue of what comes afterward, afterward.
Right, and I think that's what Todd was suggesting as a phase. Phase one is the childcare center in your, in Dave's building, that's currently there. Cover that, which we don't think will trip the DOT issues, just we need to figure out, you know, the ordinance from the town now and then the street thing.
The street design, yeah, because that's, that's the town ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the planning board has control over it. We can, we can amend it, we can change it, it's, it's a relatively quick process. The town ordinance has to go through town meeting, the subdivision ordinance does not.
And so Todd mentioned something about, if my chicken scratch is right, a bump, a special town meeting or a special time of meeting, I can't.
Town.
That would be a town meeting if, if the town ordinance has to be changed, and that would have to go to town meeting.
Okay, so that's what you're referring to, yeah, okay.
So I think you guys pretty much, you know, we're, we're gonna copy this for street traffic for the entire build out. So my client knows what the repercussions will be in the future. But we're gonna try to do this in phases where it'll just be our perimeter coming in, with just this one lot and the remaining land.
Yeah.
So, you know, have the street design to work for frontage, cause she needs frontage. And that'll be phase one, her project, Dave's existing building. Phase two will be watch, you know, one, two, three, four, five, cause they'll have the cul-de-sac and all designed, ready to go. That'll be phase two, so we want to have that incorporated into our traffic analysis.
That's correct, yeah.
We all know where we're heading, where we're heading.
Everything else.
And then phase three, we're also gonna include that in our traffic analysis, so we know where we're heading, so my client can make the.
For, for your client's purposes, can you give it to, can you break down what the effect is going to be on each one?
Yes, for sure.
Because you may be able to put in that first, set phase one and not have to do anything, but when you get to phase two, you may have to.
We can't do a daycare center with two hundred fifty average trips per day, just that one, this is over. So that can't happen. So if we don't get the two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty average entrance per day corrected, the street design ordinance is, can't do the project.
Yeah, we're, we're our second entrance.
Right.
Yeah, but the fact is. Then I would be coming, you know, and then DOT might say, yay, we tell DOT we have no choice, we have to accept an entrance, cause town has all those ordinances.
DOT's gonna go, we don't care.
Well, probably.
And you can't, you, you can't loop back to the road that isn't considered a second entrance?
No.
In other words, you, I'm thinking, well, I'm thinking you're going around the road, you know, you can make, like a horseshoe.
Still ending up on the.
So, so you're still entering on the same, well.
That one ball back point.
I, I think the solution would be from our, from my perspective.
Sorry, I was trying to think.
No, no, I know, I, I agree. Well, TAD came up with a good idea, I, I'm not sure I agree with, with the analysis, but his, his concept was to, to exempt from the two hundred and fifty trip limit on a single access point to, for any business project that accesses an MDOT highway.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
One eleven, Route one.
That's what I said, it didn't reach the level.
You're up to all of the projects, you still have the control, and it's just DOT.
It would, it would open up to anything that was on one eleven or Route one.
Right, yeah.
Which is actually a good thing, I think, yeah.
Right. So, so the steps in that would be to tweak the ordinance, draft a, a change to the ordinance, and then have a public hearing on that.
Correct.
And then, we would vote on it and put it into the court of the selectmen to hold the, the special meeting.
That's correct, they would have to.
So I would, I would say we tasked TAD with moving forward and, and making that amendment.
We asked him to, to make that change.
That draft amendment.
Very quickly, cause it's, it's, it's simply an, except for state highways, right?
Right, but the provision that.
That's what we're talking about, except for, except for, you know, Route one eleven and Route one.
Or something, right?
Yeah.
Its relationship to state highways is the thing that allows you.
No, the state highways also, like Kevin wrote.
This is it.
I don't think they're called state highways, I think they're called something.
It's just one eleven and Route one going on.
I would be, I would, I would suggest we make it very specific to those two roads.
I totally agree.
To definitely have the capacity to handle.
Handle that heavy volume, I mean.
And they're already well-established business districts.
If you, if you look in the ordinance, we're at section twelve two B two E, which is where the two hundred and fifty trip ordinance is, right below that. Twelve two B two F was repealed in two thousand and one, so we could just, we could just change this twelve B two F to say, from a commercial point of view, dropping onto an MDOT highway, and we wouldn't have to make much of a change to anything.
So I think we need to have TAD draft that up. Have us review it, hold a public hearing as soon as possible, and then move it into the, the court of the selectmen.
Yep.
Which, which will take some time, I think, I think we're, I'm hearing that, that we're all thinking it's a good idea to move forward, but we're, we're just one step.
Given, given the timeframe, we're still looking at the end of July.
Which could all be months, it could be three months.
And then, so at the end of July, a public hearing.
And then it's up to the selectmen what they want to do.
And then, I don't know, if we can talk to the selectmen and see, who would talk to the selectmen for a special meeting?
That.
The oppany would ask?
I would, I would. We would be, we would be sending it, recommending it to, to the selectmen, and then, then if they agree.
Yeah, cause we could, we could tell the selectmen that we have made the change in the subdivision ordinance, and we would like the land use, the. uh, the roads ordinance to reflect the same information.
But we have to first read it to see what they have, if they changed it or not.
I would, I would.
Yeah, they have.
I would start to reach out to the town now.
If they.
And and the, and the, you know.
And selectmen, right, I haven't talked to the selectmen, but, yeah, you know, Phil or.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Because Dan Leck is gonna take the new chair.
The next official town vote would be November.
I think the end still is.
Anything before that would be a special election, and I believe that would be, uh, the cost of that would be borne by the applicant. Which I don't know, mail-in cost and and set up.
No, because it's a, it's a, it's an advertisement for a public hearing and then a special town meeting.
Yeah.
It's probably worth it.
Yeah, it's worth, yeah.
You know.
Yep.
Get the change.
But like I said, if you're under two hundred and fifty, no, 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 if you're under two hundred and fifty, okay? Because if you go by, your numbers of one, one, I'd say max is one, okay, in and out, okay? That's two hundred, twice.
Right, pick up and and drop off.
Yeah, so every time, every time they show up.
Mom comes in, drops off the child, mom leaves, that's two, mom comes back and it could be dad, comes back to pick up the child and then.
I'm just going, so if I'm going under two, I mean, if I.
If it was dad, he would have forgotten. He forgets the bag that the kid brought, and all of a sudden, you got six.
Dad will be sitting there going, I have more than two children, what happened?
All right.
Yeah.
I I just, I mean, what.
Well, I will talk to Tad next week and see if we can't get him to draft up something for the July eleventh meeting that we could then hold public hearings afterward and proceed forward.
Because I mean, it sounds like we'll be doing a public hearing on the twenty fifth of the subdivision, yeah. We could probably have something ready by then, as long as Tad is. I mean, I think it would be very straightforward.
One sentence, really.
It should.
Right.
And then you have to get to DRT that way.
We will be doing what the selectmen have asked us to do every time we need to have a change to an ordinance, hold a public hearing.
Right, yeah, exactly. I just had him come up before. I mean, well, but no, no business of that size with that, I mean, we've had sizable businesses, but they're not the traffic generators. I mean, ultimately, to me.
We're the ones that did, like, like, uh, the dinosaur park. They've got two entrances.
Yeah.
Right, and Bentley's way more than those, but he has two entrances.
They they meet the requirements.
Seasonal cottages.
Seasonal cottages only has the one, but they had to put in a center lane.
Oh.
So you have to get to DRT.
Well, would that have a center lane two as exiting the the property, right?
I don't know what they did for the center lane.
DOT is putting a center lane in.
Oh, oh, for the.
Seasonal cottages had to put a center lane.
Oh, okay, that was.
They're gonna refill. But seasonal cottages also had the second.
Center lane like they're doing over on one eleven in front of me.
That was the, that was the second.
They didn't count that, did they?
I don't remember, I don't know, I would have imagined that's.
They could, it was gated. That's gated, they can't use it for anything other than emergency access.
That's gated, yeah, because somebody else wanted to use it.
That's how they got around it though.
Is it?
We all, we allowed, we allowed.
But, yeah. We should be able to have it, have something in two weeks on the agenda, and then two weeks after that, we should be able to have a public hearing, proceed forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is, this is something that's worthwhile, it's good for the town, it's good for you, it solves a problem that nobody knew was there.
I agree.
I mean, ultimately, I think it's as easy to, comma, with the exception of roads leading on to Route one and Route one eleven.
Yeah.
You know, it's as easy as that.
I think it's a good change, actually.
Good, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Great, thank you for your hard shifts tonight, you know. Thanks for the patience, Mike.
We're saving a little bit.
So we're all learning.
Oh, you just saw nothing tonight. Well, Simples.
No, 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 this, this.
On who's that we adjourned? Say second, Roger, someone say second.
I had that question to you, remember?
Say second. Well, you will first, so I need.